Of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We move up item nine A. Motion made executive to move up item nine A. Any discussion? Stand on all those in favor. Pose carries. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce John Galoney and Cynthia Pena-Gor Griffin from the city to talk about an easement for our new elementary school project. National Grid needs to run their lines and we need to grant them an easement to do so. Please come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Yep, this is, now it's on. Good evening, everyone. Cynthia Pena-Gor Griffin, I'm the Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Marlborough, and National Grid has asked the city to approve two easements, one of which would bring electrical service to the Marlborough High School and the other one would bring electrical service to the new elementary school. The reason why we're in front of the school committee is because the school committee, as you know, has care management and control of all school property, and we're in front of the city council at the same time because the city council has the authority to grant easements. So it's a, it's a two-parter, and we need to have approval for both, from both the city council and from the school committee in order to grant these easements to National Grid. So we request that you approve the easements tonight so that we can get going. We expect to have city council approval at Monday night's meeting, which will also authorize the mail, mayor to sign the easement documents, and we'll get them back to National Grid. And I can, I think that Mr. Galoney can speak to you about the urgency, particularly with respect to the new elementary school and their need for electricity. Thank you.
Thank you. With the new school, the contract is ready to start immediately, and we need to get electricity to that site because we don't have anything available. So that one's critical. The second easement that's in the package is to upgrade the service to the high school. So that was put in in 1976, and I've been dealing with National Grid since last summer, and that'll be a project for the summer 2019 to bring new service in from Stevens Street to the high school.
Continue motion before we have discussion.
Move to approve.
Motion made executive to approve. Any discussion? Senesci.
Thank you. I'm, just had a quick question, and I, forgive me, because I'm not sure I'm reading the documents correctly, but when it was showing, I believe it was the electricity that was headed towards the new school from Bolton Street area, it looked like it was running along the side of the road and the current path that's there. And if I remember correctly from some of our discussions, I thought there was the potential that there was going to be some changing or widening of that street going in, and I just wasn't quite sure where that fell within the process of working together.
So we don't, we don't have the plans done for the improvements to Poirier Drive yet, but the conduit will be under the ground, and we have to run it on the right side of the road, because on the left or the north side that the new school's on, we have the gas line and the water line on that side of the road. So we need to put it on the opposite side, but it will not interfere with the reconstruction of the road.
So will it stay, like, above ground for the time, time being, since we know that there're going to be changes, so it doesn't have to be dug up?
No, it will be part of the plan. It will be put underground. It's got to go down at least three feet per electrical code, so it will be below whatever the new surface is for the road.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Any other questions? See none. All those in favor? Pose carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Treeford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So now that we have electricity going to the new school, I'd like to talk about the approval of the principal position for the new elementary school as well. So tonight, I'm asking the committee to approve the position of principal for our new, yet unnamed, elementary school. While my administration is under, well underway with several of the operational tasks related to the new construction, the most important task I have is to find a leader for our new school. My proposed timeline for hiring an external candidate for the school is from July 1st to September 1st of 2019. Should there be a successful internal candidate, I would push the timeframe back to October 1st of 2019 to January 1st of 2020. My request to hire someone earlier than the building is opening is based upon the following: the need to build relationships with staff ahead of time of the building even opening, the time needed to learn our evaluation system for professional staff, the time needed to learn our elementary curriculum and have a stronghold on our elementary schedule, hire additional staff as needed, from the assistant principal all the way down to our cafeteria staff and everybody in between, to assist administration in making decisions about the building, furniture, electronic displays, and everything that goes, you know, with operating a new building, and to work with our team for some time before being asked to open a brand-new, 610-student school. My second topic is my entry plan. I'm at the end of my in-person interviews. I only have one left this month for the entry plan, and I'm thankful for the response I've received from staff. Additionally, parents, community members, and I've gotten plenty of people who have responded to my survey, so I really appreciate that. I appreciate the willingness of our staff to come and meet with me after school, share their thoughts, and allow me to learn more about MPS. I'm going to have an electronic tool available for parent staff and community members, which I did on Friday, and I've already gotten a pretty strong response from that, who did not get a chance to meet with me to share their thoughts as well. In January, I'll start writing my findings, and I'll be presenting that right around the time we're doing budget as well. My hope is for the first meeting in March. FY20 budget. As you can see, we have a draft calendar on the, for the budget on tonight's agenda. I want to share some initial thoughts as we're moving into a sometimes stressful and occasionally joyful time in reviewing the district's financial position. I'm really pleased with how Doug Diaz has jumped right in. He's already shown me that he understands the Marlborough way. That's very important for us. For two years, we've been discussing as a committee that FY21 is going to be a tough year. We're going into talking about FY20 right now. So for those reasons, I'm looking to propose a conservative budget for FY20 while still trying to maintain our focus on increasing student achievement. The work that our committee has done in conjunction with our labor groups has set us towards a path of sustainability, and I think their work should be applauded. I feel fortunate to work in the city where we receive such business, support from the businesses, from our school committee, city council, the mayor, everybody. We're very fortunate to be in the position we're in, so I just want to echo that over and over again, because not all of our peers are in that same position. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee? Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
Thank you. Thank you. High school history teacher, Cara Manzelli, high school English teachers, Amy Veralt, Leah Canocchio, and Kristen Aberini, and supervisor of Humanities 6 through 12, Jodi Reyes, are participating in creating Literacy Rich Opportunities, a DSE-sponsored professional learning network. Along with other districts' teams, they engaged in inquiry around the impact of using text sets, which are groups of text offering various perspectives on topics on, and in their case, on student literacy. The team is creating text sets, one on the United States role of World War I and another on freedom of the press and the First Amendment. They are designed to build students' vocabulary and content knowledge. The work aligns with the focus on professional learning communities at the high school. Team meetings, members will facilitate inquiry cycles with their grade-level PLCs in the spring. Another update is the passage on the civics bill. On November 8th, Governor Charlie Baker signed into law a bill to promote and enhance civic engagement. Among its provisions is the establishment of a civics project requirement in grade eight, which will focus on civics under the newly adopted 2018 Massachusetts History and Social Studies curriculum frameworks and in high school. In the language of the bill, these projects are designed to promote a student's ability to, one, analyze complex issues, two, consider differing points of view, three, reason, make logical arguments and support claims using valid evidence, four, engage in civil discourse with those who hold opposing positions, and five, demonstrate an understanding of the connections between federal, state, and local policies, including issues that may impact the school, student, school, or community. The bill also directs the State Secretary to establish a high school voter challenge and directs the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to establish, beginning in 2022-23, a Commonwealth Civics Challenge for 8th Grade Civics Projects. Another provision indicates that if DSE adopts an assessment prior to 2021-22 that includes a participatory component, it will meet the bill's civics project requirement. Finally, the bill allows school committees to designate a student outreach coordinator for the purpose of ensuring the establishment of a student advisory committee and regularly informing the advisory committee of the school committee's agenda.
Questions from the committee?
So you mentioned Mrs. Manzelli and Ms. Veralt and
Yeah.
all the teachers, putting an emphasis on literacy in the classroom and in regards to the content of their classes. What exactly are you guys, like, setting in stone to make sure that that's happening? Because just in my experiences, all my classes, except for Wind Ensemble with Mr. Verdon, actually, we haven't really put any emphasis on literacy. It's just kind of run like normal, and I know that there's been a lot of talk about, like, literacy goals within the, within the schools, and I just haven't seen it yet. So I want to know what to look out for.
So I think that one of the things that I know that you and I talked earlier about the difference between a language objective and a literacy focus, and that in all of our classrooms, we've asked for our language objectives, which is, and especially even in the AP classes, because academic discourse
Okay.
is a perfect example. For literacy, we have a couple of different levels. We have some intervention teachers, we have some reading specialists, but I think this is a perfect example of, as they're developing new curriculum, so aligned to the new History and Social Studies, they are gathering a number of different texts that students can read on a certain topic
Okay.
so that those would be embedded in the new curriculum
Okay.
and content classes.
So it's nothing that's going to be presented to the students as, this is our literacy goal?
No.
So it's just going to be integrated into the curriculum?
Embedded into it.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
That was my question.
Any other questions? See none. Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're looking to finalize our budget schedule. The only change that's in front of you right now from our previously proposed budget schedule is on March 12th, we changed the language to say that on that night, we'll get permission from the committee to post a number on the public hearing posting. So the number won't be final at that point. Second item is just another update on the negative balance on food services account. We remain stable at $3,400 compared to about $2,600 at the same period last year. Good news is, this is the third update in which that number remains at about the same level, and I just checked tonight, and we're actually at $3,200. So we continue to keep a good grasp on that number. That's all.
Questions from the committee?
I'm just curious, are we still doing all of the outreach to the fam, you know, the plans that we put in place to try to recoup that money?
Absolutely. And we continue to work closely with Jenna, Food Service Director, as well as the school administrators, and we're doing weekly outreaches, outreach to the families.
And are we making any headway having families sign up for free and reduced? Because probably, I would imagine, a good number of them are eligible.
One thing that you tend to see in our data is that right after our cutoff point in October, we tend to lose anywhere between 200 and 300 families that had status but had not yet applied, and then it takes us about a month and a half to get them all back to the applied status. So right now, we're at 58.8% of our students are on either free or reduced lunch. So that's been pretty steady this year without too much of a change.
So that means that this $3,200 outstanding is probably not coming from families that are eligible for free and reduced?
Well, one of the things that Doug and I worked on, too, is that if, if we can find that someone gets on free and reduced lunch, we will wipe out whatever the existing debt is. So when, when we know that, we can go back and do it. So this is from paying customers.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Director of Student Services.
Good evening. Oh, there we go. Tonight, I needed to, or I wanted to let the school committee know that the Department of Education over the last several years has talked about revising the coordinated program review, and, no, Heather Geary, back maybe two years ago, had presented to the school committee some thoughts that they were looking at to, to make for changes. However, they've made some revisions since then and landed on a final process. I was able to attend a workshop in November, and we were notified, the district was notified, that we're going to be participating in year one of our cycle next year, and as part of that, we'll, we'll conduct a self-assessment this year, and then we'll have an onsite next year. So as part of that training, I was able to learn what that new process is. And the goal for the department is to reduce the amount of time that is consumed by districts in participating in the coordinated program review. There's a lot of hours that would go into it, you know, every six years for both special education, EL, ELL, and civil rights in Title I. So now, it's, it's significantly reduced in size and scope, and as part of our self-assessment this year, which we will submit by May 2nd online, the amount of special education criteria has been reduced from 52 elements to between 12 and 15 elements, and the civil rights criteria is reduced from 26 down to three. ELL will not be part of this tiered focus monitoring, which is now the new, the new word. Instead of CPR, we'll be calling it TFM, a new acronym, of course. So the special education records are going to be reduced from 30 to 15, and as part of that, what they decided to do was to do data collection. So during our self-assessment this year, we'll be doing data collection for three elements. One is on early childhood, one is, and that's for student, children who are coming in at the age of three, and collecting data over three months for those referrals and the timelines and the evaluation process for those students. We'll also be collecting data for three months for initial evals and reevaluations. So any students that are referred for special ed or students who are currently in special ed who are due for their three-year reevaluation will be conducting, collecting data around those timelines, when evaluations are consented to, when those evaluations are done, when the meetings are held, and when the IEPs, if they're eligible, are sent out to the parents. And the last one is around the transition planning forms for students ages 14 and over, and we'll be collecting, again, data for three months on elements of transition planning forms that are written up for those students. And those were all elements that were, that the Department of Ed were looking for in the student records. So that's one of the reasons why they were able to reduce from 30 records down to 15, because they found a different way to be able to efficiently look at that, that compliance without having to go into more student records. And the onsite visit will happen next year after we submit our self-assessment in May. The Department of Ed will have a team that will look that over, and in early during, during the summer, they'll reach out with any questions and, as well as providing any assistance to us around any areas that we felt that we were deficient in and that we needed help with. And the goal for that is that, as part of a self-assessment, is to identify areas that we need work, so that by the time they come out for the onsite, that we've addressed those issues and we've corrected those issues, issues by the time they come out for the onsite. So the onsite isn't for the Department of Ed to come out and have a, we got you, you know, this is what you're not doing. They're using this as a support mechanism for them to be able to support us and be able to correct areas that we find, and then they'll come out for the onsite, verify those actions that we've taken, and then also just confirm compliance and around the elements that they're looking at. Then, instead of three, a three-year mid-cycle, what will happen is that year four, they'll, that will be the second time that they come out, and it will be a flip-flop of civil rights and special ed. That one, when they come out four years from next year, that will be heavy on civil rights and less on special education. There'll be very, very few student records that they'll be reviewing at that time. They'll do the onsite facility, looking at the facilities around ADA compliance. And they have not told the districts yet how ELL will be folded into this, whether or not it's at the same time, if it's just the same year. And they're trying to work with the ELL department, the Department of Ed, to still figure that out. So I don't have any answers on that piece. Both for year one and for year four, it also will include parent surveys that they'll send out to all, I believe it's all parents, not just all special ed, but I'll have to confirm that. Let's see. And then the only other thing that I needed to report out was just giving you an updated status on our out-of-district tuitions at this point in time. The number of students that we have is relatively comparable to my last report. We do have some students that are coming back to the district, some students that, that are transitioning out, as well as, as we had discussed before, students who are aging out. We've had a couple so far this year. Well, we do have a number that we, that will be aging out next year, which I'll talk about at budget, the budget presentations. Any questions?
Questions from the committee. Senesci.
Thank you. So you went exactly towards one of my questions was about the ELL, only because I would think that, I mean, our, our population continues to grow, and it continues to be a challenge to make sure that we're taking care of that population and making sure that they have all, that they need. I guess I'm curious to kind of keep pushing for more support from Desi, you know, about it. That's great that they want to make sure that everything's going in the right direction for special education, but ELL would be great to have the support, too.
At, at, yeah.
And feedback.
At, at the, at the training, it seemed like, from the comments that she had made was that the, the reason that ELL is not part of this is because when, as part of the CPR audits, when ELL was part of it, that department was holding up the, the reports that were going out to the districts for the civil rights and the special ed piece. So it sounded like, they're like, well, until, until the ELL department can make decisions and figure out where they want to go, they wanted to have that be treated separately.
Gotcha. And just curious, how, how does it end up that there's a selection of records, like the 30 records to 15 records for the special students? Is that something where they just randomly come in and make a selection and say, these are the 15, or is that something that you all need to do?
So we choose, in the past, for, for districts, districts have always chosen the 30, and now we'll continue to choose the 15. We have to do a wide representation. So of the 15, I have to make sure that we have representation of elementary, middle, and high school in district, out-of-district, the different disability categories, making sure that we have some of the, the higher percentage, SLD and autism will definitely be two that they'll be looking for, as well as a student who's had discipline. So there's all different elements that they want to be able to look at, and so in choosing records, we look to choose for a record that will be able to give us multiple criteria. So, you know, if they're looking for a high school or an out-of-district transition plan who maybe has had discipline, you know, that, so in that one record, we can hit four or five different areas that they're looking at.
Great. And if it's possible, not right here and now, but if it's possible that you could just give us a bullet point of what some of those elements are for the special education criteria and the civil rights criteria, I think it'd be helpful to know, and probably in a bullet point form as opposed to huge paragraphs on everything, so
Sure.
get an understanding.
Absolutely. So they are, in the next week or so, are supposed to be opening up the, the portal with those elements in there so we can start working on it. So they had just told us 12 to 15. They didn't itemize those out, so once I have that, that'd be great.
Whenever.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, and I was, I was curious specifically about the civil rights criteria, because I know in the past, it seems to me that some of the civil rights issues cross over into the EL and the special ed population in terms of them not getting
Yeah.
or whatever, the services that they need, so.
And typically, they choose the criteria that, like, sometimes the federal government is coming into the state and looking at. So whether or not that's like the restraint policy or discipline, those might be areas that they'll, they'll target.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public participation. Any public participation? Public participation. See none. Approval of a new position?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned in my report, with our, opening of our fourth elementary school in September of 2020, I'm just seeking the approval for a new principal position for that school.
Questions from the committee?
Well, do we have to?
Yep, make a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion made executive to approve. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen-Hedger.
So is your initial foray into this going to open it up for applications from within the district? Is that my understanding?
I think for, for some positions, we open it first internally and then give it a certain number of days. For a position like principal, I think my intent would be to open it internally and externally at the same time, because you want to get a wider swath of candidates to look at. But that wouldn't prevent anyone internally from applying for it.
Senesci.
Thank you. So obviously, in improving this position prior to our budget, I guess my, my question a bit, knowing that we're going to get tighter and tighter on our budget, I would assume, how, how will this fold into our budget discussions? I mean, I, I recognize the need for it, and I think you've laid out the plan as to the wheres and whys and hows and all of that, but yet, we're kind of talking about something where we haven't even gotten to our budget discussion and understanding the impact of the staff that's having the most impact on the students as opposed to necessarily more administration or other positions that might not have the daily interaction with the, the students all the time. So I guess that that's, I'm a little anxious about trying to approve something when we, we don't have, like, the full picture of how it could affect other things.
Sure. At first, it would be a request in the budget for a, a new position that would have to be funded. If we're not able to fund it through a budget position, like if we, we need to stay under a certain gap level, and we need to stay under a certain percentage, the district also always carries a salary reserve to be able to pay for unforeseen expenses. That salary reserve, in the, I've been here five years, so I can only speak about those five years, but in the five years I've been here, we've been able to use salary reserve each year to be able to make moves such as this. I'll give some examples. So the three years ago, three and a half years ago, we used salary reserve to hire two additional translators at that time. We didn't have that budgeted. We had, we knew we had a need. We had to start moving forward with that. We've consistently used whatever revenues were appropriated to us to be able to fund the positions we couldn't get through the budget. So if you remember about four years ago, we really wanted to add a school adjustment counselor and a guidance counselor to the TLC programs. We did that through using some circuit breaker funds as a one-time use to be able to do that. We had to carry on circuit breaker for two and a half years. We weren't thrilled with that, but now they're off circuit breaker. So I think when we look at it
circuit breaker. So, I think when we look at it, we've been able to carry some things when we have to, when we have to make that. What I would propose is this would be part of the budget. Worst came to worst, I would pull it back out of the budget. We could still certainly do it through salary reserve and then looking at our other funds.
Thank you.
Other questions? CNN, all those in favor? Posed, carries?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Operating budget transfers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just doing some usual budget cleanup here. First cluster of transfers, $6,600 within Jarrick's salary accounts, just again, using efficiencies to fill some budget gaps. And the second cluster is $7,300, same thing, Kane's salary accounts.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Posed, carries. Thank you. You still have, you're still running some deficits on some of the accounts, though. Are we going to see those at the next meeting? When are we going to see those backfilled?
I was hoping not to bring too many at once.
Bring them all.
All right. Will do.
I want to fill.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, budget calendar approval?
Yes. So, this is just an opportunity for the committee to formally approve our proposed budget calendar.
I have theater tickets the night of the budget hearings.
What's that? Want to change one?
No. Sorry. I'll change the tickets. I'll change the tickets.
We're certainly flexible.
I have theater tickets the night of the budget hearing, but it's okay. I'll change the tickets. No, but thank you for changing the timing around the vote, because I really feel strongly about that.
Does, does this make more sense based on our conversation?
If it meets your needs. I understand your need. I just think that there's no purpose in a public hearing if we're doing it after a vote. To me, the purpose of a public hearing is to hear the public. And so, it works for me.
As long, I talked with Doug, as long as we know what to post, doesn't, I mean, we call, call it whatever it is, but we just need to be able to post something in the paper. That's it.
Right. And that just gives the public the understanding of what it is that we're going to be discussing. Doesn't mean that that's the final number.
Exactly.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Posed, carries. Acceptance of gifts and donations. Brigham Family Trust, Whitcomb Robotics Team, $5,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
With gratitude.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? Posed, carries.
Thanks to Jody for, she's been part of this now, and you've been working with Bob on the Brigham Trust, so I want to thank you for doing that.
Awesome. That's great.
The M A D E S C, emergency impact aid for displaced students, $90,585.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
Can we discuss?
Sure.
How, how many students? Are these the, are these the students, like, from Puerto Rico?
Yes. There was, I believe, from memory, there was 16 students.
16.
And we received this, but this is actually for last year. This is a little confusing. The municipal finance piece of it is a little nuts. But this money is actually to reimburse the city in some ways for the cost that the city paid for at that time.
And are all of those students still with us, or have they gone back? I'm just curious. I was having a conversa, you don't know the answer?
I think that what we were notified of at the end of last year was that they were unenrolling and returning home, which I think almost all of them, maybe one or two families are staying in the area, but majority of them were going back to Puerto Rico.
So, interesting. At the conference, I had a conversation with folks from Springfield, and they got something like 800 students from, from Puerto Rico. And I don't think they went back. I mean, they have, it was a huge, it's a huge district to begin with, but, so. And they asked me how many we had, and I didn't know the number. So, now I do. Thank you. Did we vote on this already?
Motion to approve. All those in favor? Posed, carries.
Thank you.
Reports of committees. Any reports of committees? CNN, Members Forum. Members Forum?
You've got to have something to say.
Well, wish you all a...
Happy holidays!
The high school winter concert is tomorrow night. Everybody come out, 7 o'clock.
Can't wait.
Come see our wonderful performing groups.
The little school concerts are next week.
School concerts, fifth grade concert is Tuesday of next week, and the sixth grade concert got postponed until January 15th. So, come see those as well.
Thank you, Tim. He's got everything.
See? There you go. He's a member. You are a member. Of course you are. No?
Have a great holiday season, and see you on the other side of the new year.
We don't have to have, there's no induction this year. So, do we have to do...
There's no induction, there's no anything. We don't have elections. We don't have anything.
Do we still do a initial meeting to set subcommittees, or it's a two-year thing?
Nope.
I can never remember.
Mr. Mayor, I just have to ask if a committee member would mind signing the warrant for Doug?
And Mrs., Mrs. Matthews did report that she was fine with.
And we will sign.
All right. Yes.
Entain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Posed, carries. Thank you very much.